The regular meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom pursuant to Section 20 of the Acts of 2021, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members, as well as members of the public, can participate remotely. And it looks like Francois might have a hand up. Can you hear us Francois? You can't hear us? Um, I, I think the audio issue could be on your end. Um.
Is the owl muted?
I don't know if you can hear me, but I have no audio.
We can hear you. How about now?
Much better, thank you.
Alright, so we had just called the meeting to order and had read the public hearing notice. Recognizing that we have a quorum of the planning board present and with Erica Dack in the room, Francois Steiger online and myself, we also have the associate member, which constitutes a special permit quorum. We do have two members that are absent tonight. So moving down the agenda, is a call for public comment for anything that is not already on the agenda. Anybody here comment about anything that's not on the agenda? Alright, moving forward, we have acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting. And just as a note, it should be minutes, acceptance, not a.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No problem. So distributed to the board in advance was the minutes from the previous meeting. Does anyone on the board have any corrections to the minutes? Alright, well would some of you like?
I would like to put forth the motion that we accept the minutes as presented and as available.
Excellent, hearing a first, do I have a second?
I will second.
Hearing a first and a second, any further discussion or corrections? That was certainly a challenging one to get through to take minutes for. So calling a vote?
Dack aye.
Steiger aye.
Dack aye.
And the chair is aye, the minutes are accepted. Alright, so moving down the list, we have a public hearing that I'm about to call to the order. So. So just to, just to remind everybody, public hearings or public meetings are meetings that essentially happen within our meetings, subject to certain notice requirements. Well, when we call a meeting to order, it is to collect evidence for the purpose of making a decision. Tonight, I believe we are going to end up calling the meeting to order and then continuing it to a date certain. We'll talk about it once the meeting happens. So with that said, calling to order the public hearing for the application for a special permit of Damon Schmidt from Royal Sun Farms LLC with regards to 69 Gardner Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts for a commercial marijuana facility. Patricia, do you actually, do you have a copy of the notice itself here?
I do not, but that is what is here, is the exact wording from the.
Oh, that is the exact language from the notice, okay.
From the notice. Mr. Murray would make a copy and paste.
What's that? Alright, so this is the, the original opening of this, this public hearing. As we, as we look around the room, we notice the applicant's not here. I actually just received a message from the applicant that he was injured and sprained his ankle and is seeking medical treatment. So he's not going to be in attendance tonight. Also, the, um, uh, the, well, we'll save that for a little bit further down here. And by a little further down here, um, does the staff have anything to report regarding the procedural nature of this application? Yes?
Okay, I have staff. Um, so, uh, Mr. Schmidt, um, gave us these lovely special permit that you see before you. Um, he was notified via mail and via email, um, that in order to comply with the way we do special permits here, we usually have a consultant that goes through the special permit with the applicant to make sure that everything is present and accounted for. Um, and that, of course, the consultant has consultant fees and that he needed to pay for them. He came in this morning and paid for them and the consultant was just given the special permit today to review. So that is its current status as of since.
Alright, well, thank you Patricia.
Yeah.
So. Uh, we have the, the written materials that we've received that are in front of us, but we're obviously missing some, some key elements here. Those elements being the review of our consultant and the applicant being here to provide testimony for questions. So what I would suggest in, in order to save a whole bunch of time for everybody here and not have to reinvent the wheel, I, I propose that we continue the, the public meeting or a public hearing to a date certain and then provide notice to the applicant in order to afford time for our consultant to review the documents that are filed and exchange questions and for the applicant to, to rest up and be available. So with that said, I would like to, um, I'd like to recognize Mr. Murray from Places Associates and consultant from the planning board. How much time do you need to do a review of the application?
I need a month.
Okay. So we would be looking at doing it for our second meeting in, in June at the earliest then. So that's.
The third Thursday?
Yeah, that, that's ultimately the situation where, I mean.
The 20th, I think, June 20th.
Alright, does anyone who is currently here from the board have any hard conflicts that are going to line up with June 20th?
I don't.
Mr. Steiger?
Please, hold on.
I have a very quick delay. I don't know if the audio is just, I, are you, this is proposed, do you have an editing for now? Here, I'd like.
This is for Royal Sun Farm to continue the, to continue the hearing to the 20th at 6:30 at the same location so that our consultant has time to prepare.
I would, excellent, let's go ahead and do it in such a manner.
Okay.
That's it.
So would somebody like to make a motion to that effect and recognizing that this is a special permit vote, so the associate member's vote is being counted?
I will make that. Oh. I will make that motion.
Second.
Alright, hearing a first and a second, calling a vote, and it's a roll call vote because we have a member attending online, so Mr. Steiger?
Steiger aye.
Dack aye.
Russell aye.
Alright, we, we are continuing the public hearing to a date certain and that date certain is the, is June 20th at 6:30 at the same location. Alright, so that is one down the list. So moving on to the next public hearing. So pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 40, Section 15C, scenic roads, the Hubbardston Planning Board is holding a public hearing regarding the removal and alteration of a portion of a stone wall located at 0 Ragged Hill Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts, O 1452, applied for by Doug, um, I'm sorry about your last name.
Drohan.
Drohan. Of 520 Main Street, Jefferson, Mass., O 1522, for construction of an access driveway to the land. So. So come on up to the table. So just as a reminder, where this is a public hearing, it's beginning at 6:42 PM. And this is the first time we've opened this hearing. Read the notice out loud. About any members of the audience that speak, please be sure to identify yourself before speaking. Patricia, can you report to us on the status of this filing?
Yes, Mr. Drohan, um, came into my office to apply for a scenic road permit. Um, they then came in after meeting with you and setting up their public hearing dates. I posted their notice for them. I also put together their certified mailing so that they could mail out their abutters notices and they at that time dropped off their removal plan for the driveway, which you all have in your binders under new business, it's the first one.
And all applicable fees have been paid.
And all applicable fees have been paid.
And to the best of your knowledge, sufficient public notice has gone out?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, so can the applicant?
Tax collector sign off on that application?
Yes, I do believe so.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll come back to questions in a couple of minutes. Uh, so, uh, applicant, please let us know what you're trying to do here.
Um, we have a, about a 20-foot section of stones that, where, um, the state is allowing us to cross a wetland due to an NOI where the driveway needs to go. It's at the thinnest point of the wetland area and it falls on this piece of wall. And for us to put a driveway in, we'll have to remove it and then rebuild the sides to save the stones into there and to give us access for a driveway.
Mr. Chairman? These last year quorum.
Yeah. The internet has completely got out.
Is it, is it the whole building?
It's the whole building. Give me a second and see if I can bring it back, I'm so sorry.
You're doing one telephone?
Uh, well, let's, let's recess for five minutes while we figure this out.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Drohan. Unfortunately.
Technology.
It's been happening all week. We, they did the, the finish of the migration.
It's flawless. So we're, we're recessed until 6:50 to try to sort out the technical issues.
It happens.
Come join us back in the pews.
It's called cookie break.
Cookie break.
Cookie break.
It forces you to take it. Because I'm using the same Wi-Fi.
I, we're all using the same Wi-Fi, you lost it too.
I was wondering why my laptop wasn't on.
No. It's been happening all week. We came in and all of our computers, like all of everything was just, all the settings were changed. It was a fun, it was a fun month. CM Geeks on the K chart that day.
Cross street.
Oh wait, they knew.
Yes.
It's down by, uh, right next door to me, there's two on one side, then there's the brown and then there's the other side.
Of course you can, ignore my notes. Ignore the scribbles.
It's the next spot where it has the realtor sign.
It's one of the easiest way to do it, having a place that was in the notice and they don't need to do that, so that's like, I'll do it. I'm just, instead of bringing three separate notices, it's right there.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, yes, hold on, hold on, don't get too excited.
Does that mean we're not being recorded as well?
She's still her part, right?
I was just trying to get the link to it.
It's so funny.
Yep.
I mean, it's too bad that, that like struggling for a backup would probably.
I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
Well, when there's, uh, when there's a, a 4G tower across the street.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Hey, we're working on that too, they came in, they came in to say hello this week, so.
We'll just be able to answer phone as a hotspot. Get back into the website, that's a positive step.
Yeah.
The package, it's the business model, it makes no sense to use quote me for the 500B and it's like, like you can't live in, yeah, whatever, we're not a budget.
Yeah, but, yeah, you're better off with 500B for sure.
Yeah, it's always not going to be less expensive.
Yeah.
Cause he called me and said for 300 and we don't know what if.
I had it for just long enough to connect to the same screen for a second.
Damon?
Yeah, sometimes, I think everybody does.
I mean, it gave me the option to. The, the problem is, uh, the quorum.
The quorum is a nice wall.
It was a nice wall, yeah.
Can you, can you hear me? Francois? Can you hear me? How about now, the connection problem is our, our end, not your end. Alright, well, calling the meeting and the public hearing back to order. So for the purpose of continuing, uh, we can still conduct the meeting, we just can't conduct any other business. So unfortunately, unless the connection just miraculously restored itself, which it might have. Can you hear us now Francois? He's nodding, we can't hear you though. Um, oh, I know, let me, I bet you, I bet you a guy can hear you now through my computer.
Okay.
Alright, so good news, we have a quorum again.
Yay.
So let's, uh, let's, let's get right back at this.
But you don't have your TV up.
It's okay, she's going to record from here and there, uh, you should be able to pick it up.
Yeah, and the audio should be picked up from it, so. Believe we are sufficient for this. So alright, so you let us know what we're doing. So just to remind the board, uh, that there are specific considerations that we're supposed to be making, uh, rather using while making a decision related to this. We should be considering, uh, the contribution of any trees or stone walls to scenic beauty, beauty, the age and historic significance of the roads, trees and stone walls, features of the road such as surface pavement with bridges, public safety, local residential traffic patterns and overall volume and congestion, compensatory actions that might, that are proposed such as tree and stone wall replacement, functional importance and urgency of repair, maintenance, reconstruction of paving, additional evidence contributed by abutters, town agencies or other interested parties, recreational uses of the road, preservation of natural resources and historic resources, scenic and aesthetic characteristics, environmental values, other planning information, existence or absence of reasonable alternatives for applicant and applicants' reasons and considerations. So with that said, we, we've heard from the applicant, what the applicant is looking to do. We've heard from the office, so now I would like to invite board members to, to ask any questions they deem necessary to the applicant. Do any board members have any questions for the applicant?
I, I have a very good pronunciations, I was not able to hear, uh, the original description of the work. The stone wall that is being taken up, did we hear as to whether or not part of that stone wall may be utilized and set up in, in a different location?
Please, please answer.
Uh, yes, I intend on trying to use the stones on each side of the driveway and make it an entranceway coming into the driveway, without taking the stones off-site or burying them or losing them, we want to keep the stones exposed. That's the intent.
Aye, okay.
Alright, any additional questions from the board?
A question for Patricia.
Yes.
On the application for this special permit.
Yes.
Um, did the tax collector sign off on that? There was a question on that last time.
Yes, um, yes. Tax collector signed off on 4/24/24. It's at the bottom of the application, if you scroll all the way down in the drive, it's at the bottom of the application.
Thank you.
No problem.
Alright, any further questions from the board? Alright, any, um, any public officials acting in their official role looking to comment on this? Uh, and in this particular situation, a public official would also be the planning board's consultant if there was any comment. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not implying that you have to have comment, I just have on my checklist that I'm going to follow from now on that I'm going to ask you if you have comment.
The only question I have is, has the tree warden been consulted? Are trees being taken?
There aren't any trees being taken on this. Alright, any, uh, any other comment from officials acting within their role? Alright, how about, uh, do we have any comments or questions from around the room from the public?
I kind of have one.
Uh, identify yourself for the record, please.
Uh, Katie Young, Ragged Hill, 86, um, so this is like, may sound very petty, but there's some daffodils that the older lady that used to live across the street, Kath Lady, who was a master gardener, planted right in front. Can I go dig those and just kind of move them down the street just to kind of keep, just so you don't plow them down and just kind of, just to keep her memory alive kind of thing?
I don't need any daffodils.
Okay, cause they're right in front of where you're about to drive over and I'm like, oh, they're all going to be gone and she planted those so long ago.
Sure, help yourself.
Okay, alright, thank you. Hopefully I don't get poison ivy.
Any, any other questions or comments from members of the public? Uh, would the board like me to read or summarize everything, or would they like to waive that?
I would like to waive it from my end.
Sounds good to me. Uh, does the applicant have any final comments?
Nope.
Or, alright, so I'd like to, um, I'd like to ask the board if somebody would like to make a motion to approve this application for the removal of a 20-foot section of, uh, wall for the purpose of installing driveway at the location, uh, identified at the beginning of this hearing.
Sub move, Mr. Chair.
Uh, hearing a first and a second?
I will second.
Alright, and this not being a special permit, just regular members are eligible to vote on it. Uh, with a member participating remotely, uh, a, a roll call vote, so Mr. Steiger?
Yeah, aye.
Dack aye.
And Monroe aye. So the, uh, the application, uh, actually, we need to close the public hearing. So can I get a motion to close the public hearing first?
I'll make that motion.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Hearing a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, calling a vote?
Dack aye.
Steiger aye.
And Monroe aye. And asking again for the motion that was made erroneously during the hearing, uh, would somebody care to bring that forward again?
Sub move by, uh, by Congressman Steiger, Mr. Chair.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
A second.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, calling a vote?
Steiger aye.
Dack aye.
Monroe aye. Alright, you are all settled.
Very good, thanks, all the members, good luck.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, that is not tonight's agenda. Moving down tonight's agenda, um, we have another public hearing pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 40, Section 15C, scenic roads. Hubbardston Planning Board is holding a public hearing regarding removal and alteration of a portion of a stone wall located at 25 Lombard Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts, O 1452 for the applicant Joanne Tavano of 21B West Hill Drive, Westminster, Massachusetts, O 1473 for construction of access driveway to the land.
Can I go up?
Yep, come on up.
Well, I don't live there anymore. Living in temporary housing right now, I sold it. So, yes.
I don't know. So, uh, we, I've read the notice out loud, um, I'm now going to ask for a report from the staff about any procedural or application issues.
Um, Ms. Tavano came in to see me, she filled out her, um, application. All fees were collected, it was signed off at the tax, um, collector on the same date. It's kind of a party over here, um, and then she did her certified public mailing with me and the abutters notices went out along with the notice for a public hearing posted twice, um, in the Gardener News. Um, and then she kindly sent over the engineering letter, which you have in your binders on the backside of the new business, um, going in length about the detail, uh, work for the driveway and what they're proposing to do over at the property regarding the stone wall.
Excellent, uh, thank you for that summary and thank you for talking about the written materials that have been submitted for the record. Uh, so, uh, with the applicant, please identify yourself and let us know what you're looking for and why.
So I'm Joanne Tavano, I own 25 Lombard Road, bought the land a couple of years ago for intention to build a home. Um, and so I'm starting the process of building a home and I realized we have a scenic wall that I need to move to make my forever home. So if you ask the other applicant, I will make sure that the stones go in front and I'm not here to disturb it or make it actually better than it is now, cause it really isn't a wall. If you look at it, it's not much of a wall on that side of the street. I was going to take pictures for you, but it's really not a wall. Um, so, yeah, so I'm here to ask to, uh, have the driveway permit in, that was already sent over to Travis with the plan for the driveway. Actually, the well is already done, so just waiting for this piece.
Alright.
Well, permit I should say.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Uh, do any, um, do any board members have any questions for the applicant?
I, I don't. I, I don't.
I, I do. The original understanding was that this was gonna be a twenty plus or minus feet removal. Now it's up to sixty. I'm not quite understanding because there's very little detail here that I can read at least from the grass engineering report as to the reason for the increase that is so dramatic from twenty plus or minus feet to sixty plus or minus feet. What's the, what's the reason here?
Does it say sixty on it?
Yeah, it does. It says, um, the proposed wall removal twenty plus or minus was underestimated on the application. The actual proposed removal of the wall will be about sixty plus minus due to the site conditions and ensure safe access to and from the site.
So I guess because of the way originally you thought they could go straight up because it is, it's up on a hill that it flattens out on the land. Because it's too, when they were doing the perk test, the, Dave Richards who did the excavating said it's kind of too, it's too, you don't wanna put your driveway like that. So the engineer went back. He has to go around, so my driveway's gonna be like four hundred feet. So I guess, I'm not an engineer. But I guess it has to be wider so it can accommodate, if you look on the driveway permit, how it has to curve up to not have it straight up kind of thing.
I, I still don't understand because I mean this wall is at the perimeter or basically it butts the road. And lamentably, I understood that, I, I thought there was gonna be a sketch associated with this proposal and I don't see it.
There is. I sent one in. I did. I sent the driveway sketch in.
Well, it's not present in our folder and so therefore I don't have information that I can visually view it.
Patricia has it. Patricia has it.
And so I, I have a question here regarding the actual wall and this, this wall typically, from what I understand, they should be basically next, next to the road. And a twenty-foot removal is typically what we see in most applications because somebody's trying to build a driveway and with an access into their lot. This sixty-foot, this change to sixty feet is something that, again, I don't have a visual and I do not understand based on even the way that you described it at this point in time, why the sixty feet are now required.
Well, if you look at the sketch that I sent and it's all, that, that, so, so I sent it to the town, Travis has it and Patricia has it. It was the first email I sent you, Patricia.
Which I don't.
Patricia is getting it for.
I'm getting it.
Oh, okay.
Why is he so angry? Like, I don't know. I'm not an engineer. And if you go look, it's not much of a wall anyways.
Well, that's not the point though. The point is, is there is a stone wall there.
All right, well, let's hold on for the, the picture for the moment.
Yep, thank you. And then please bear with me also because from my side, I, I don't know how this is gonna be presented and how this is gonna be visible to me.
It's there. See it? It's in the refresh. It's right there. Yep.
Okay, it's, it's in the Google Drive.
Can I give you one moment, please? Bear with me, please. So I, I, I'd like maybe if the applicant can describe what is in, in the picture here, where that wall, where that wall is and what portions of the wall will actually be removed.
Francois, I can explain a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Murray.
Um, they're putting a culvert at the edge of the street to catch gutter flow. And they're reinforcing the shoulders of the driveway. I'm trying to, are you on the uphill or the downhill side? Uphill?
Uh, down, like, down.
So it's just down off the driveway?
Yeah, so there was an apron that had to be put there, you're right, that the, the Travis wanted for that driveway. Maybe that's why it's, it's, it has to be, you know, widened?
Oh, no, you're going up. You're on the top of a hill. So that's, Mr. Steiger, they're, they're trying to reinforce the shoulders as they come right off the road with gravel.
I see that on the left and the right of the, what appears to be the driveway, there's something that is pointed to and has a notation that says riprap areas. Is that what you're referring to, Mr. Murray?
Yes, that's crushed stone.
Okay, fine. So the question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we use that when we don't want to grade out. So in this case, the grade is really steep in that area.
Mm-hmm.
So rather than chasing the grade and chopping down a lot of trees, we use a really steep slope and cover it with rock. And it will hold itself in place. That way they're not, they can go very steep on the edge of the driveway without expanding the footprint. Uh, because normally earth is stable at two and a half to three to one. In this case, those slopes will be close to a forty-five degree angle instead of a lot flatter.
I understand now.
So in a way, they're minimizing the footprint, capturing the runoff at the bottom of the hill so it doesn't get into the roadway.
So then if I may ask some additional questions, right now on this, on the diagram that I'm seeing, the one on the, on the left.
Yep.
May I ask, where, where is the stone wall right now? Is it like along the length of the, the Lombard Road?
It does show a stone wall across the entire frontage. We have the Google Earth up and it is a, it's not a stack-on-stack wall. It looks like mostly it's a single stone embedded in the earth and very few stack-on-stacks.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. All right. And then now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and along the driveway, it looks like there's also an area that's gonna be graded that's referenced in the notes. In, in order to, to lessen the slope that's going into the driveway, so that earth's gonna end up being disturbed. But.
I wonder if my engineer can.
But to the, to the point in the engineering letter, that's being done for the purpose of mitigating the runoff onto the road.
That makes perfect sense. Now the sixty feet then would entail where the crushed stone starts on the left. Ends where the driveway, uh, starts and then continues to where the next section is at least depicted on this, uh, on this picture here where the next set of crushed stone is and then ends where the crushed stone finishes. So it's the two rip areas plus the driveway and that's the sixty feet plus or minus, correct?
Uh, no, I believe it's also including those parallel lines that the notes reference because that's part of what's being, being graded in order to meet the specification from the DPW.
Yet the stones that are being removed are the sixty feet that are from, and again, I repeat, between the rip area on the left all the way up to the rip area to the right, correct?
Yeah, so what they are, so to the right of the driveway.
Yep.
They are showing parallel lines that climb up the hill.
Yep.
And they're destroying easily twenty feet of stone wall for that grading.
I see. Or some, I'm sorry.
And I, you know, they could use rip rap there and, and get rid of that, reduce that footprint. Because I think they only need like forty or forty-five feet, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the DPW was, to the best of my knowledge, the DPW was involved in the process on what was proposed here.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. That's, that's great. And again, my, my point here is not to, is not to be harsh. We've just simply had, and I, we've had several instances where people have come in and, and done alterations which were needless and destroyed their first stone wall. So we've had, over the years, had to deal with them. And so we're, at least myself, I'm, I'm a bit more critical in terms of how I review these here. And I understand now better that since I have this picture in front of me, what, what is being proposed. Thank you so much.
Isn't it? Additional questions from the board? All right, any additional reports or questions from staff?
Did the, has the tree warden been consulted?
Uh, are there trees that are being removed for this one?
There's actually some on the road that I would like them to look at because the roots are like hanging over the, well, like at that time. But do they do that? I don't know if it's my responsibility.
Yeah, yours not there.
So, but I would like someone to actually look at them because they look like they're hanging in the road. Like the roots are like hanging off that s- squase wall and you can see like we had a storm and they're big trees.
Um, and there's been a lot of washout in that, that particular area. Um.
So.
So I'm worried about them. So I was like, if I'm having someone cut them, I could do it then. But on there.
Well, where, where the issue comes up with that is to the extent that, that those trees are within the right-of-way, they need to be listed on the application.
I'll do whatever, whatever. I haven't gotten to that point.
Um.
Do you want me to have her connect with Eric to see which trees are in question?
Yeah, I, what, what I would suggest, um, in order to, assuming the board supports it, uh, is in order to, uh, keep this moving. So that, that's a deficiency where we can't grant this tonight unless the rest of the board feels differently.
Uh, listen, I'm homeless right now and I'm already out a month. So if you could do a contingent on that, I'd appreciate it. Because I have to move forward. I'm, I'm, I'm living temporarily in a house. And I know it's not your problem, but this has already pushed me out a month. I didn't think this was gonna be an issue when, on the application, even with the well perk, no one said anything to me about this wall. It should be stated. So I'm already pushed out of, I can't, I can't be pushed out longer.
Okay, I'll, I'll certainly throw it up to the board, but I'm, I'm expressing what our typical practice is here. So what's just been suggested is material deficiency in the application. So, um, that, that.
No one, no, not one person told me before this meeting to do this, like, because I would've done it. I've been sitting for three weeks waiting for this meeting.
Okay, um, I, I would ask you to not interrupt me until I'm finished, please. Um, so we're, we're left with roughly, and, and the board can, can feel free to disagree on this, but I'm attempting to read the room on the board. So typically, when we have an application that's materially deficient, we either deny it or we continue the hearing for it to be updated. So we could continue the hearing to our next meeting and the application would be updated with the trees that get moved. We were in a position where we end up having to follow the law and be consistent. And I understand it's a challenging situation for you, but we're, we're forced to work within the four corners of the page. So with that, I would like to open that up to discussion from the board to see if the board has any, any other thoughts. And I would also like to include, Mr. Murray, if you have any thoughts on it too.
You could defer to or make the condition of your permit to say that the applicant has to obtain a public shade tree permit from the building inspector because he has to hold a public hearing on his own if you're cutting more than a six-inch diameter tree within the right-of-way. So he has to post those trees by law. He's supposed to post those trees and hold a public hearing independent of the planning board.
So that, well, that does make sense. What that would ultimately mean is if there were trees that you had removed that were larger than six inches, instead of just adding them to this process, it would essentially be a different application. If the trees are smaller than six inches, they're not, they're not covered by the, by law. So that, um, that's, that's certainly a possibility. What are, what are the board's thoughts on doing that?
His requiring, his advertising requirements aren't to consecutive weeks and it's not nearly as burdensome.
No.
He can get it done a lot faster than, and if the planning board makes it their permit contingent, if you choose to do that, the public will have the right to speak, the public will have the right and notification of the trees to be cut down. And you, in theory, won't be holding the applicant up any further.
That's, that seems pretty reasonable. Mr. Steiger, were you able to hear that?
I did, and I would agree with what Mr. Murray has presented.
Okay.
That's it, all right then.
All right, so I guess that, yeah, that is a sensible solution. Do you, if you have any questions about trees, just ask, ask the tree warden, Eric on them. And.
I can mail you his in contact information right now, Joanne.
And it's six inches at what height off the ground was it chest height or?
Diameter breast height, so four feet.
Yeah.
Measured four feet from the ground.
All right, so, um, are there any public officials in the audience looking to make comments acting in their official roles? All right, any interested parties in the audience? Okay, make a comment, all right.
Mike Stoff, I Lombard Road. I'd just like to have a clarification on Mr. Murray's comment. I think he said the building inspector and maybe meant the tree warden.
Tree warden, if I mispoke, yeah.
I, I might have misheard, but I think I heard that, okay.
I misheard.
Um, I have the Public Works Department's driveway permit here in front of me. I believe that twenty foot is doable but not practical because they require a thirty-foot minimum drain pipe. And the driveway itself has to be at least twelve foot plus two four-and-a-half foot radii. So although that can be constructed within twenty foot, it's not particularly practical. So I would say that as a landowner and resident along the road there, that I appreciate that the least amount of impact is done, but that twenty foot seems a bit impractical in this case, given the slopes and some other things. So as, from my personal perspective, I think up to thirty foot would not bother me at all there. Also, because of my nearby residents, I go by this spot all the time. I'm very familiar with it. Um, and there are some trees that I believe under our scenic road by law would be impacted. Um, so as long as that process is followed, I'm good with that. Um. I appreciate the applicant's situation, but I come to many of these public hearings and I think that consistency is very important to the process. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, any additional comment from the applicant?
Nope.
Uh, does anybody on the board not support the waiving of reading all of the written materials into the record? Thank you very much. Um, any final comments from staff?
No, I've sent you, Joanne, I sent you Eric's information. He will call you. He, you, he will get in touch with you right away. If he does not, let me know and I'll go and help him.
All right, so I would, I would like to entertain two motions. The first motion would be to close the public hearing. The, the second motion would be to approve the stone wall removal permit.
So I make, I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
A second.
Hearing a first and a second. Any further discussion? Calling a vote.
Dak aye. Dak aye.
Uh, Monroe aye. The public hearing is closed. Uh, I would also like to call for a motion to decide the application. Um, so would somebody like to make a motion to grant the application as written?
Are we saying that this is subject to the review by the tree warden?
Yes, because the, the, the. Yes, because the 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 application is um, or excuse me, I guess the motion would be to approve the application as written. And then supplemented by the engineering letter. So.
So moved.
Okay. So hearing a first, do we have a second?
I will second.
Hearing uh a first and a second. Any additional discussion from the board? Alright, well, calling a vote.
Steiger, aye.
Dak aye.
Uh, the chair is aye. The uh, the application is approved. Alright, well. Coming in. Alright, move in forward on the agenda. We have uh new business. Um, and to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any new business. Next, we have old business and uh I don't believe we have any continued old business. Uh, following is administrative matters. So our next hearing, or excuse me, our next meeting. Uh, is going to need to be uh a well-attended meeting for a couple of reasons. The first one being is we need to actually have the vote on the the permit for um, for paper crane, I'm not mixing them up.
Right.
Excellent. And we'll need to be here to sign that. Um, I also am going to put forward um. The beginning of administrative rules. Uh, and the first administrative rule is gonna be about the structuring of public hearings. And my reasoning for for doing this is because these are rules that already exist. Um, where we're not actually changing anything. We're just writing them down so that the public knows that that's the way that it goes. Um, so that the expectations on how people are gonna act and comport themselves at public hearings will be clearly defined going forward. For either myself or the next chair, if anyone is interested in becoming chair, because our next meeting is, the meeting after that, I guess, will be the reformulation meeting.
They would be the the twentieth meeting.
Yeah, the meeting on the twentieth will be the reformulation meeting after the election.
Cause the meeting, the meeting, next meeting, well, you could do a next meeting because it is the fifth and the town meeting is the fourth. So you could do it on the fifth if you like.
It would be, yeah, it would be that day.
Yeah, it would be that day if you still have it. So, yes.
Yep. Yeah, so if anybody's super excited about that, uh, please let me know and um. I'd be happy to to let you know about what goes into it because there's a pretty serious commitment of time other than what's at the table. But if anybody is interested, I'm I'm happy to to help you out. Alright, so any additional matters not anticipated by chair?
I just to be clear, so we have two meetings in June.
Yes.
First meeting is June the fifth, which is Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Second meeting would be, uh, I believe this is Thursday, the twentieth, correct?
Yep. Yes, and that that's the one where we've continued the uh, the application for Royal Sun.
And the elections are on the eleventh, correct?
Eleven, eleven?
Eleven.
When are, when, when do we have our election?
Yeah.
Town, town elections for our board because.
The second. They're the second.
Tuesday.
Second Tuesday, so it's actually the eleventh.
Wait, the eleventh? Oh, second Tuesday, so they're the eleventh. So no, the the following meeting would be the reformulation.
Eleventh. Yes. Reformulation would be the twentieth.
Okay. Very good. Alright.
Alright. Alright, so I believe that to be it for administrative matters. Uh, moving on to number eight, which is matters not reasonably anticipated by chair.
Um, I need a representative of the planning board at the town meeting early to meet and greet with the uh residents as they come into the town meeting. Thank you.
That, that's a good point. Uh, at least one of us is gonna need to agree to do that. Um, I have a decent likelihood that I have to go to an investor meeting for one of my clients. So I might not be available that night because that's not something I can say no to.
It's only.
I plan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. It's, I was just saying it's the, just the thirty minutes before the town meeting and it's very casual.
And that's, that that is fine. I plan on being at the town meeting. As we are going to be presenting the battery energy storage system by law and I will be prepared to talk about that.
Excellent. There's also gonna be the requirements for giving an oral report and Patricia and the town clerk will make sure you have everything you need ahead of time for that.
And that will be thirty, that's the one that we do thirty minutes before the town meeting itself, correct?
No, that was in the town meeting.
No, the the oral report. Yeah, the oral report is at the town meeting where somebody has to say, we had a public hearing, this was the date we had it on. And it was uh appropriately moved, all that stuff.
Okay, I'll touch base with you then, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
And with Patricia.
Mr. Chair, just, I cannot make your June fifth meeting.
Then we will very, well, I'll check with, we'll have the office check with the applicant.
We'll, we'll have the paper crane totally worked out between us and them. So it'll just be the boards.
Yeah, I think, I think the only issue that was left on it was um. Uh, Peter was eligible to vote and that I don't think was noted.
Okay.
He had attended both meetings and was voted by.
I have three items. Yep, okay. That's the third.
Yep. Yep. Alright, so any, any other uh matters not reasonably anticipated by chair?
No.
Alright, and final call for public comments.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Stahl, Five Lombard Road. I didn't want to delay the the uh hearing for twenty five Lombard Road. I will want to formally request the site plan that was discussed this evening. Uh, if I could get a paper copy of that, I appreciate it.
Yep.
And for clarification, um, my comments earlier were as a resident of Five Lombard Road.
Absolutely.
However, I am on the open space committee and that does have some overlap with the scenic road aspect that was discussed tonight. But my comments were not from the um open space committee. They were from me as a resident of Five Lombard Road. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent, thank you. Any additional public comments or comments from the board? Alright, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. That would be adjourned meeting.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
I will second.
Hearing a first and a second. It is non-debatable. Calling a vote.
Dak aye.
Steiger, aye.
Monroe, aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.